At our leadership team meeting, just about the succession. All right, everyone, it is seven o'clock prior to our meeting beginning. Pastor Priggy is here from Fellowship Baptist Church. Pastor, thank you for joining us.
All right, let's pray together. Father in heaven, your word tells us that we are to act justly and to love mercy and to walk humbly with you. And Father, we pray that that would be the ideal tonight and that would go forward in our city. Thank you for these civil servants. I do pray your blessing on them as they convene their meeting, help them to discuss matters with wisdom. And Lord, thank you for our town and the good things that are happening. And we do pray your blessing on each citizen. Keep us safe, Lord, draw us to you. We ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. All right, with that, at 7:01, I'm going to call to order our Tuesday March forthcoming council meeting. Megan, would you please take the role?
Davis.
Here.
Lampy.
Here.
Board.
Here.
Barts.
Here.
Blankey.
Here.
Smith. Schmidt.
Here.
Wetzel. Moldenhauer.
Very good. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item on our agenda is the minutes of the council meeting from February 17th. Rich, would you mute yourself, please? Anyone have any comments or questions on those minutes? All right, then let's move to comments and suggestions from citizens present. Megan, do you have anybody? Anyone remotely that would like to comment? All right, we do have another opportunity at the end of our meeting as well. Let's move to reports then. You all have the Plan Commission Minutes of February 10th, Public Works from February 11th, Town Square Programming Commission from February 19th, the RDA of February 19th, and Public Works from February 25th. Comments or questions on any of those? Mr. Moldenhauer.
One question on that. It said on... That, that storage building, the Morton Buildings for the storage building, there's that 168,107 cost of installation to be revisited. Are we going to insulate that storage building?
Mr. Board, do you want to cover that?
Not planning on it at this time.
You think you might be doing it in the near future, though? And what would the purpose of that be?
Just to maintain some of the products and so forth that are going to be stored in the building. But right now, we haven't found a need for it.
Okay.
Mark, do you want to cover anything on that? The reason why we, it was bid both ways?
The original bid was to include insulation, but the Morton Buildings Company provided to us an alternate to exclude the insulation, just in case there was that issue or desire to do so. The recommendation was to go without the insulation from me. Moss Brothers suggested that the insulation should be included for the sake of, as Mr. Board mentioned, but as well to hopefully protect, if you will, some of the foundation work, the concrete and the like. But my recommendation was to not include it at this point, just because we're coming to the end of the project and contingency fund is a little bit on the tighter side. So felt like this would be something that was not necessary unless we could afford it into the future.
So there could be a savings there without it?
The 168 is without the insulation.
The, I don't recall, it was two...
Like 201 or so.
With it. So the 168 is the price without. Any other comments or questions on it? Yes, Mr. Lampy.
This is not my favorite thing to call attention to, but, but if you look at 6C Town Square Programming Commission Minutes, item 3A where it talks about, the reference there to, there's a $50,000 in Fund 66. I believe that's actually a reference to zeroing out the TS Future Fund contributions from 50,000 to 26-44-62-66 in the city budget. That essentially pertains to the Future Fund budget, which reduces expected revenue by 50,000 and essentially increases the expected deficit of Town Square from 40,000 to 90,000 this year. And the, and the balance would then fall from 179,616 to 129,616. And that pertains to work we do certainly on the council in terms of decisions we make around revenue that we've allowed the Town Square to make. Because of the current pacing with that structural deficit remains, we basically are saying operations go through 2026, not through 2029 as envisioned in the budget we pass for 2025. So I have asked for some clarification on that, whether we basically are zeroing out expected contribution revenue for the year or not. But as stated in the Town Square Minutes, 3A, it's listed as zero out.
Yeah.
I have worked with Christine and Stephanie on that, and they are in the process of creating a requested budget modification. It's not going to be a net 50,000 negative. It will be less than that because of a projected increase in the, in, not the contributions, but the revenues. So yes, contributions, they're suggesting a $50,000 reduction, 50 minus 50, but an increase in one of the other revenue lines. And so the net decrease will be less than 50,000 once they've finalized what their projection is.
Very happy to hear that.
Other comments or questions? Very good. Okay, let's move to communications and recommendations. Just the first one to note that April 1st council meeting has been moved to Monday, March 31st, due to the spring election. For some of us, that's our last meeting, which is very bizarre after a long time. So March 31st, please make a note of that in your calendars. Next, we're excited this evening to be able to have Chief Brower do a presentation of our Citizenship Award. So Chief Brower, I'll invite you up, and tonight, we're going to be recognizing that award going to the Chickens Unlimited.
Good evening. Just a brief note on what this award is. This is the Alfred and Helen Cron Citizenship Award. And this award is named after Alfred and Mickey Cron and Helen Cron. Mr. Cron was a 27-year veteran of the Watertown Police Department who retired in 1970 at the rank of inspector. Both Mr. and Mrs. Cron were very active in the community, and this annual award in the amount of $1,000 was created to honor their memory in the community that they loved. Nominees for this award must be a citizen or group of citizens who have made a significant contribution to the safety and welfare of fellow citizens of Watertown, Wisconsin. And as Mayor McFarland said, today we have here with us Chickens Unlimited, an organization, and represented is Tom Godfrey, Claire Peterson, Andy Testman, and Mark Hayden. If you gentlemen would join me up here, that'd be fantastic. Just a bit while they come up about what Chickens Unlimited is. It's a charitable organization of Watertown community members who donate time and money to worthy causes. For instance, last year I was told that they donated over $27,000 to 30 different worthy causes. Okay, stand tight for me, I'll read some more about you. Chickens Unlimited has made significant contributions to a wide range of community initiatives supported by the Watertown Police Department. They have been a key supporter of the Donut Dash 5K fundraiser in 2014, 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019, and 2021, helping to raise funds to support victims of domestic and sexual abuse. Since 2010, Chickens Unlimited has also donated to the Bicycle Rowio, which has been instrumental in promoting bicycle safety among local children. From 2019 to 2023, they sponsored Lights and Sirens, a community safety fair at Riverside Park in July. And in 2018, they supported the K-9 Fund to assist the department's K-9 unit. In 2023, Chickens Unlimited generously supported or funded life vests for each squad, enhancing officer and citizen's safety around the city's waterways. Chickens Unlimited also contributed to the Dare Program in 2014 and 2019. And in 2024, their contributions helped purchase laptops for the squad cars, an essential piece of equipment for daily operations. Additionally, they have sponsored ice cream socials in local parks to promote community engagement. And through their consistent and thoughtful donations, Chickens Unlimited has had a lasting impact on the safety and engagement of Watertown's residents. Your names also, or the name of Chickens Unlimited, will be listed on the Alfred Cron Citizenship Award plaque in the Watertown Police Department. Again, thank you, folks, for your support of our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I think we'll be honoring another person next, next month, is what I understand?
Congratulations.
It's a pretty impressive list of contributions from one organization. So thank you all for your continued support of our community. The next item on our agenda, I'll invite Mr. Byer. The next item on our agenda is our bridge update. Andrew's going to provide that to us this evening.
Good evening. I'd like to provide a brief update on the progress of the bridge project, particularly in regard to the latest information that we received from WISDOT yesterday regarding arch fabrication, delivery, and decking. Some upcoming construction milestones include Thursday, March 6th. Crews will begin preparing the site for the arrival of the replacement arches. This will involve lifting and positioning the fascia girder and removing the previously delivered arches that were found to be incorrect. On Friday, March 7th, the first two replacement arches will arrive onsite and be set into place. Once positioned, the fascia girder will be reset and crews will begin work on the spandrels. On Monday, March 10th through Tuesday, March 11th, work will continue on the spandrels, overhang jacks will be installed, and deck forming will be completed in sections that are ready. Then on Wednesday, March 12th, the second set of replacement arches is scheduled to be delivered and installed. This also requires resetting of the fascia girder and continuing work on the spandrels. On Thursday, March 13th through Saturday, March 15th, construction crews will continue with spandrel installation, overhang jack installation, and deck forming. For WISDOT, the contractor will be handling all traffic control during arch delivery, and deck concrete pour is currently scheduled for late March. During last Wednesday's construction meeting, I asked the project team directly if the completion date had changed during the refabrication process. They confirmed that the most recently communicated completion in April remains unchanged, and progress is continuing. We will continue to provide updates as this work continues.
Questions for Andrew? Yes?
Is the, the concrete pour, I take it that's, that's the point where we'll potentially, there's like a clock going in terms of load bearing on the bridge? Yes, so once the deck is poured, it'll have to cure. And once the concrete gets to an appropriate strength, then traffic can, can continue over it. But there is a clock associated with that curing time.
And that changes by, with the temperature? The time?
Thank you.
Other questions for Andrew? Yes, sir.
The only thing I got this time was guaranteed to work, right?
He's not answering that. We did ask them to go onsite to measure, to have the as-bills measured of both these members and then also of the railing. I was told they were going to do that. So we've, we've followed as closely as we can with this process and we're glad to see new pieces coming and old pieces being removed. It is my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, they, they scrapped everything.
Yeah, correct.
So last time we talked to you, they were like ascertaining what could be refurbished, potentially, the end result of that was zero. So every spandrel, both the arches, were all were refrabricated, refabricated. Okay. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to miscellaneous business. The only item here tonight is the payroll summary from February 5th to February 18th. Comments or questions there? All right, then let's move to ordinances. The first is ordinance 25-03. This is to amend Chapter 288, Erosion and Sediment Control. This is here from Mr. Board and Public Works on its second reading.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Board, second by Mr. Barts. Any comments? Just want to allow the record to show that Mr. Board's name tag is basically in front of Mr. Lampy, and so it's a miracle that I did not call you guys the wrong name tonight. Thank you. I'll have to take that up with my team member stuff. I looked at you, Dan, and I was like, where's your name tag? Because I thought that one was Steve's.
I'll take it as a compliment.
That's helpful. Thank you, very helpful.
I'll take it as a compliment that you thought I looked like Mr. Board, too.
Wow.
All right.
You are really begging for compliments.
Go ahead, Megan.
Board.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Smith. Oops, I'm sorry. Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel. Moldenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you, Megan. Next is ordinance 25-04. This is to amend Chapter 453, Stormwater Management, again from Mr. Board and Public Works on the second reading.
I move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Lampy, seconded by Mr. Wetzel. Any discussion? Megan.
Lampy.
Aye.
Board.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Moldenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Very good. All right, let's move to resolutions. We have a string of resolutions here this evening that is essentially our annual street and reconstruction and resurfacing and street maintenance work. So the first is Exhibit 9712. This is the resolution to award the 2025 Payment Marking Contract 1-25 to Century Traffic for $66,955.70. Again, Mr. Board and Public Works. Motion by Mr. Board, seconded by Mr. Wetzel. Any questions? Megan.
Board.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Moldenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Very good. Next is Exhibit 9713. This is the resolution to award the 2025 Routen Crackville Contract 2-25 to Thunder Road for $33,372.60. Again, Mr. Board and Public Works.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Barts, second by Mr. Lampy.
Yes.
Second by Mr. Lampy. Discussion? Megan.
Barts.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Moldenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Board.
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you. Next is Exhibit 9714. This is the resolution to award the 2025 Seal Coating Contract 3-25 to Farner Asphalt Sealers for $136,814.44. Again, Mr. Board and Public Works. Motion by Mr. Wetzel, second by Mr. Moldenhauer. Questions, comments? Megan.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Moldenhauer.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Board.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Next is Exhibit 9715. This is the resolution to award the 2025 Storm Sewer Cleaning and Televising Contract 5-25 to Green Bay Pipe and TV for $110,286.75 from Mr. Board and Public Works.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Davis, second by Mr. Lampy. Yes? Go ahead, Andrew, but...
Videotaping. So the first step is the cleaning, so they'll jet the pipes, clean it out, then they'll stick a camera in it to check for cracks and any imperfections. If it is degraded to a point that we need to put it on a repair list, we will. This is a relatively new program, it's the third year into it, but our goal is to clean and televise 20% of the city storm sewer system each year. So we've, we've had good results in the last two years, so we're looking to continue the program.
Thanks, Andrew. Any other questions or comments? I was going to say, Andrew, maybe just stay on your side of the room. Yeah.
Does Vicious Sewer also coat storm pipes, or is it just sanitary that they do? So is that when we do have to find, or when we do find a repair, can we repair it in that fashion, or do we have to completely reconstruct?
No, we can do cured and placed pipelining. We have done it in the past for storm sewer, so it has to be an appropriate fix. If it's a collapsed pipe and we can't fit a liner in, we'll have to remove and replace, but we have done that in the past.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Maybe just hang out on that side of the room. Anybody else on this one? Megan.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Board.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Moldenhauer.
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you. Next is Exhibit 9716. This is the resolution to award the 2025 Vitu Minus Surfacing Contract 6-25.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Mildenhour.
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you. Next is exhibit ninety-seven sixteen. This is the resolution to award the twenty-twenty-five vitu minute surfacing contract six dash two-five to Wolf Paving for five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars and four, five hundred and twenty-six thousand, forty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. Again, Mr. Board and Public Works. Motion, Mr. Board, second by Mr. Blankey. Questions on this one?
Board.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Mildenhour.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Board.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, let's do exhibit ninety-seven seventeen. This is the resolution to award the twenty-twenty-five cured and placed pipelining, uh, contract seven dash two-five to Viziu Sewer for one hundred and two thousand, four hundred. This is here from Mr. Board and Public Works. Whose turn? Feels like you guys have been a little quiet over there.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Wetzel, second by Mr. Mildenhour. Any questions or comments? Megan.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Mildenhour.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Board.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Mildenhour.
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Thank you. Next is exhibit ninety-seven nineteen. This is the resolution to award the twenty-twenty-five concrete curb and gutter and sidewalk contract eleven dash two-five to Runout Construction for one hundred and forty-nine thousand, thirty-one dollars and eighty-five cents from Mr. Board and Public Works.
Also move.
Thank you, Mr. Mildenhour, seconded by Ms. Davis. Questions or comments? Megan.
Mildenhour.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Board.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Blankey.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Very good. And our last is exhibit ninety-seven twenty. This is the resolution to award our twenty-twenty-five crushing materials to A.W. Oakson Sun for one hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven ninety. This is here from Mr. Board and Public Works. Motion by Mr. Wetzel, seconded by Mr. Lampy. Any questions on the crushing?
One statement?
Sure.
We just, we're spending a whole lot of money, but compliments to Richie and Andrew. Every one of these bids came in under budget. Now, that either means that they guess really high at their estimating, or they're really good at their estimating, so compliments to them for the work they're doing.
I appreciate that, and I would say, considering the amount of bidders that we have on these projects, I think we have, uh, good estimating and a good team to work with, and so people recognize that and, and want to be a part of the work happening here, so kudos to the team. Anybody else on this one? Megan.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Mildenhour.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Lampy.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Very good. We are at the opportunity for comments and suggestions from citizens present. Anyone like that would like to comment online? All right, that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Mildenhour, second by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you all.